It is Tuesday, 1 March, 2016 at 7:02 PM. I'd like to call the regular Board of Trustees meeting for the Village of North Hudson to order. And First Order is invocation. Dear Lord, we've had a lot of suffering and things happening in the area. I would ask for your sympathy and your condolences or your help for the family that, the Duncan family, that suffered a major house fire last night in the village. I'd also like to have you spread your grace to the Golds family in Hudson that lost a daughter in a car accident recently. And I would also ask for your protection, for your help protecting our police officers. We've lost 10 police officers so far in 2016. And it goes with all that serve. I pray that you all remember them in your prayers and in this we ask your help. Amen. Roll call, please.
Husty Head?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Brian Burgland?
Here.
Hey?
Here.
Stanifer?
Here.
President Wettman?
Here.
Thank you. Item number two, review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting of 5:00 January, an emergency board meeting of 2:00 February. Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any amendments or changes?
Yeah.
Questions to the board meeting minutes? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number three, comments from the floor as an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities, either on or not on today's agenda. And...
And I had sent a wire again about this issue. There were three walls that were installed in 1990 as part of the Riverside Improvement Project, Riverside Drive Improvement Project. They had removed some wooden walls that were there probably since the easement was granted in 1947 and replaced with a segmental concrete block wall. And these have been deteriorating over the past five years. The concrete blocks are crumbling and starting to fall apart there. One of the walls has already collapsed. That was constructed by the village. That has created a hazard and a nuisance. It's, these blocks are about 100 pounds each. I tried to move them off the lawn at 922 Sally's Alley because they did roll quite a ways. And a number of the blocks are leaning against a tree that is dead. So there will be further collapse of that wall. These walls should be replaced as part of one project. I think that's why the village took it on in the first place because you can't, they're all contiguous walls. The wall next to the driveway is next to another wall that holds up Riverside Drive, which is next to a wall on the north side of Riverside Drive, which is going to collapse in, probably in the next few years. I've been taking pictures of the wall. The blocks have been gradually getting worse. It's the freeze-thaw cycle that is, trying to get one that's large enough to show that this is the wall on the north side of Riverside Drive. You can see that the concrete is just crumbling. So if you replace one of those walls, say the one that's fallen, there's grading to be done, regrading to replace the driveway that's possibly going to undermine the wall that's still standing on the south side of Riverside Drive. And if that wall has to be replaced, any work that is done, has already been done on the wall at 922 Sally's Alley would have to be redone. All of the grading would have to be redone. So it would be extra expense. Anyway, I just removed a piece. This is from the wall on the south side of Riverside Drive. You can see it's just, it's just falling apart. So this, this wall is just gradually, not gradually, it's been accelerating over the last few months with the freeze-thaw cycles. So it started out slowly and now it's been, every time I go out there, you can see advanced deterioration. And what I'm looking for is this, I mean, this has to be looked at as one project. Can't replace one wall and then go and replace the others because you'd be redoing work that's already been done. So that is basically our concern.
Well, you're not on the agenda tonight, so we can't discuss this as a board.
Mm-hmm.
We appreciate, you know, the issue of Public Works and our engineering people have looked at it. I believe it's on the agenda for next month. So, you know, to be able to come to the Public Works meeting and discuss it more, I appreciate, you know, like I said, I appreciate, you know, we are aware of what's going on there, but we can't discuss it tonight because it's not on the agenda.
I appreciate it going on the agenda. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
What date is it?
Excuse me?
What date is it?
Uh...
Is it on the March or the April mark?
April.
March, May. It's next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Yep. Oh, Tuesday after?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda, I can fight with this computer, is we have our, Brian Elwood from Xcel Energy is here to do a presentation on solar energy options. We've looked into solar energy as a possible savings for the village as we're always trying to find a way to save a buck or two. And there's been a lot of development in solar energy and solar gardens. So Brian, I'll let you take over.
Great. Well, thanks for having me. We'll see if we can get this, see if we can get this working. Don't touch. All right. Well, thanks for having me. For those that don't know me, I'm Brian Elwood. I'm the Community Service Manager for Xcel Energy here in Hudson in St. Croix County. I also represent Polk County and Pierce County as well. Been with Xcel for 21 years, and you may have known Trudy Popenhagen, who was in my position prior to me. She retired a year ago and is enjoying her time in Florida and upper sure cabin up in Polk County. So glad to talk a little bit about solar energy. When I'm out in the community, the question I get asked more than anything else is what's going on with solar energy. There's a lot of discussion about solar energy, and solar energy is something that people are definitely interested in. Xcel Energy, as a company, we're definitely a national leader in renewable energy. We're the leading provider of wind energy in the country. Your energy right here in North Hudson is provided by Xcel Energy, and 25% of that is provided through renewable energy. So that's a combination of wind and solar array on our system along with hydropower as well. Customers want more renewable energy, so we've been looking at different products and projects that we can offer to customers. And Solar Connect Community is a product that we're offering here in the state of Wisconsin. We just rolled out this project a week ago and excited to talk a little bit about it tonight, talk a little bit how community solar is different than other solar products that you may have talked about. Typically, when people think about solar energy, you think about installing solar panels on your home or your business or your, or your building. And that can get expensive. There's a cost with installing those solar panels. There's a cost with operating and maintaining those systems. Through community solar programs, we allow customers to pool their resources together and have a community solar garden and then receive the credit of the solar energy that's produced from that solar garden. We've had gardens produce energy in states like Minnesota and Colorado that Xcel Energy serves, but these gardens are the first community gardens that we're offering here in the state of Wisconsin. Our program will be the biggest community solar program in the state of Wisconsin. It's up to 2 megawatts that we're going to build in 2016, and we have approval from the Public Service Commission to build up to another megawatt in 2017 as well. And we'll look at that once we get through with the first 2 megawatts. You may have seen community solar gardens in other communities as well. St. Croix Electric has a community solar program that they offer to their customers as well. New Richmond Municipal Utilities, Riverfall Municipal Utilities, you may have seen the River Falls Solar Garden when you go south on 35 there. So solar gardens, community solar gardens are a great option for customers, particularly those customers that don't want the hassle or the maintenance of maintaining their own solar garden on their building. So what is a community shared solar garden? So it's a centrally located solar PV system that provides electricity to participating subscribers. And that's important because we want to make sure that the program is fair to the customers that are participating, but it doesn't raise the cost for customers who aren't participating. So as you'll see from this solar panel, you can kind of envision that one home or business would receive the credits of the solar energy produced from one of those panels, and another home or business would receive the credits produced from that panel. And that's really how it works. You receive the value of the solar energy that's generated through that centrally located solar system. So why community solar? So we talked a little bit about this, but community allows anyone to use solar. Right now, about 70% of our customers cannot install solar on their homes because they either rent, live out in the woods where they have too much shade, maybe their home faces the wrong direction. So about 70% of our customers can't even access solar energy on their own home or business. Community solar allows anyone to use solar energy and receive the credits that that solar energy produces. You don't have to install or maintain the panels. There's an upfront subscription cost, and then your cost is done. You receive credits on your bill over the life of the contract, and you don't have to maintain the system. The system is actually maintained by a solar developer, and we'll talk a little bit about who that's going to be for our first two community solar gardens. The cost for a community solar array when you pool those resources is obviously less than an individual array. We talked about roofs that may be shaded or oriented in a way that you cannot generate solar electricity. So community solar gardens are really a good option for those customers as well. So as we talk about Solar Connect Community, it's easy. There's just a quick, simple, one-time enrollment fee for customers. Customers do receive the renewable energy credits that goes along with the solar energy that's produced. As a company, we retire those credits on behalf of our customers, so we don't use those credits to comply with any state mandates for renewable energy. Those are assigned to our customers that subscribe to the program. Customers can sign up to 100% of their maximum use at their home or business. So whatever your maximum annual use is, you can sign up to receive all of your energy through one of the community arrays. The minimum subscription is 200 watts, and the maximum subscription is 400 kilowatts. And local. So it's important to note that these community arrays were, will be built in the state of Wisconsin. So Xcel Energy, we serve a pretty wide swath of northwestern Wisconsin. We serve all the way from Ashland down to Verona, from Hudson over to Abbotsford. So we have a pretty big service area. And we put an RFP out to different solar developers and say, hey, can you come and build solar here in the state of Wisconsin? So they looked at a couple dozen different sites, and the two sites that were chosen are in Eau Claire County and La Crosse County. Now, while they might not be located here in St. Croix County, our customers do receive credit for the solar energy that those arrays will provide. So we talked a little bit about that. You choose your solar subscription. There's the one-time enrollment cost for that, and then you get a credit on your bill for whatever that solar energy generates over the next 25 years. So again, you pay your upfront cost. Once the solar array is generating electricity, we'll measure how much electricity is coming from that. Then you receive a credit proportional to what you, your subscription cost is over the course of that 25 years. So the price. So it might be a little bit difficult if you don't understand how pricing for energy bills works, and it can get a little bit complicated. We've talked to the village a little bit about this. $1,780 for a kilowatt. $356 is the minimum subscription amount, and that's for 200 watts. There's an upfront deposit that we're asking customers to have. Once we get a critical mass of customers here in the next two to three months, we'll go back to the solar developer that we have the RFP with and say, here's what we've got, and then they'll build their arrays. The intent then is to have all the solar arrays built by the end of 2016. They'll begin producing energy by the end of 2016, early 2017, and customers will then start to receive credits on their bill. Once the deposit is paid and the array is built, that's when the balance is due for the subscription cost. So customers will pay that before the solar array actually goes into production. And then going forward, customers will receive a credit on their bill. The credits that you see here, seven and a half cents a KWH, and then 6.9 cents a KWH are for different customer class sizes. So for instance, the village hall is on a demand rate, so the credit that the village hall would receive for the solar energy would be 6.9 cents a kilowatt hour. Now, these credits are the floor right now, so these are the lowest that the credits will ever be. We don't want to forecast what the credits might go up to over the period of time, but certainly, energy costs go up over time. We go into the Public Service Commission every year, every other year, to look at our costs, and so those credits likely could go up over time, but we don't want to presume what that might be. But it's safe to say that these are the lowest that the credits will ever be over the term of that 25-year contract. So what a bill looks like. You've probably all seen your bill before, so you'll see your typical energy charges, and there'll be a credit on the bottom of the bill. So the credit will be multiplication of whatever the solar production is by the subscription amount, and then the credit will go on top of the customer's bill. So let me give you a real-life example. So this is the village hall. So the village hall uses 41,000 kilowatt hours per year. So if you wanted to size a subscription for about half the energy use of the village hall, that'd be about a 16-kilowatt subscription. These are the numbers that we showed you before, so the cost of that would be about $28,000. Deposit and the balance due would be about $25,000. We estimate that based on where these solar arrays are located, because they are high-efficiency solar arrays, they generate a lot of energy, about 20,000 kilowatt hours per year based off that 16 KW system, subscription size that the, that the village could do. The credit that you receive on your first bill, and that's the credit based off the solar production, would be about $1,400. The payback is about 17 to 20 years. Again, this is just an estimate. We don't know what that credit will do over time. But it's important to note that using even those very conservative estimates, that there will be net solar credits in excess of that subscription amount over the course of the term of that contract. So if the payback is somewhere between 17 and 20 years, the contract is for 25 years, you'll continue to receive those credits over the life of the contract. I'll just pause right there and see if there's any questions.
Does the contract move with you if you move from one house to another?
Yep. Great question. So the contract does definitely move with you if you're an Xcel Energy customer in Wisconsin. It'll move from house to house with you. If, for instance, you downsize dramatically in your house where you, you have a subscription size that exceeds what your average use is at that new home, you can, you can change your subscription amount at that time. But if your average energy use fits with your new home, your subscription amount will stay the same. If someone passes away, the company will buy back their subscription if they would like to. Customers can also choose to donate if they're moving out of, you know, out of our service territory to a nonprofit. They can donate their subscription amount to a nonprofit as well.
So what would be the average kilowatts per home?
So an average home uses about 750 KWH per month, so about 8,000, 9,000 KWH per year. I don't know what the average home, if you did 100% home subscription size, I'm not sure what the KW subscription would be. So a little bit difference between KWH, which is the energy used, and then the subscription size, which is measured in kilowatts. So I know that the village has looked at solar energy in the past and, you know, the benefits of reducing your carbon footprint or having sustainability goals that residents want to see. Community solar is really a great option to do that. Once the subscription costs are paid for, there's no operating and maintenance costs going forward. So the solar developer for our program is Pristine Sun. They're out of San Francisco, California. A very big solar developer. They've developed solar projects throughout the country. We're very confident in their ability to construct a quality project. If there's maintenance and things that are needed to the solar garden going forward, that's handled by the solar developer. Our customers are only required for that upfront subscription cost and then receive the benefits of those credits going forward. So just real quick, schedule coming up, so right now between February and April, we're doing this kind of early subscription drive. We're trying to find out what customers are interested in these projects. If we get enough people interested in the projects, we'll go ahead and build them this year. We're also holding these town hall solar power hours. So we're contracting with the Midwest Renewable Energy Association. They're hosting 10 solar town hall meetings. One's going to be in Hudson on March the 16th at 7 o'clock. Given up, opportunity for people to come and learn more about solar energy and also sign up for the program there. As I indicated, we expect to construct the arrays in the fall of this year. They'll go operational by December, and then early next year, customers will start to receive the credits on their bill for the program. So we're really looking forward to customers signing up for these programs, really giving solar energy a boost here in Wisconsin. And once we get these first gardens constructed and built and operational, we're looking to build more in the future.
Is there like a website or something that people can look at this, too?
Yep.
Oh.
There you go.
Is that nice?
I think you saw that slide. So xcelenergy.com/solarconnectcommunity. Again, this program is only offered in the state of Wisconsin. We've got other community solar programs in different states that we offer, but this is our, our solar program here in the state of Wisconsin. If you've got questions, our email address, solarconnect.com/xcelenergy.com. Our program team can answer those questions, whatever they might be. And we've talked to the village about solar energy as well. If you have additional questions about how much solar energy would be needed, not only for maybe the village hall, but for other facilities as well, we can look at that and give you a subscription amount that would work.
Sounds good. Melissa, can we put this on the website, boss? Very good.
Would you mind forwarding that presentation to us?
Sure. Be happy to.
Awesome. Thank you.
That'd be great. Well, thanks, Brian. Unless anybody else has any more questions? Thank you very much.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Item number five, adoption of final special assessment report for street improvements for Lemon Street North. Approval requested. Is there a motion?
I'll move, Stan.
Thank you. Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Questions, comments? This is Kevin. Is there, want to give us a quick recap, please?
Yeah. So yeah, this is just a lemon street project that we did last year. A portion from St. Croix Street. It's just basically a pulverized relay project. So the only thing that we're looking at assessing was 50% of the cost.
Kevin, grab the mic.
Yeah, we're just looking at 50% of the cost of what we did out there. When you look at what the preliminary numbers compared to the final, we ended up about $4,300 less, which is a good thing. And then if you go into, oh, Schedule C kind of is the breakout. That's the assessment roll. Individual property owners, they're going to see a credit of between $400 to $600 than what we were originally looking at last year. Then when you go back into the, you know, the payment schedule, those individuals will be allowed to pay that back over a four- or five-year period. Any other questions?
Thank you. Questions on the board? Okay, it's, it's a special assessment. All in favor of the motion to approve the final special assessment? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, item six is a resolution, 2016-01, for levying the special assessment for street improvements for the Lemon Street project. And...
I move to approve resolution number 2016-01.
Thank you, Colleen.
Second.
Um, I suppose, read the whole thing here.
No, you don't have to read the whole resolution. That's fine.
Okay. So we just go with, with the number. All right. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote for the assessment. Brian?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Okay. Item number seven, application for conveyance of land filed by Joseph Granberg, GNS Land Solutions LLC, and Philip Taylor, Taylor Investment Company LLC, approval requested. Motion?
I move to approve the application for conveyance of land between the adjoining properties of Philip Taylor and Taylor Investment Company LLC at 609 Galahad Road North.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Colleen. Is there questions? Mr. Granberg, are you here?
I'm Philip Taylor.
Philip Taylor? Okay. I'm not sure if there's going to be any questions, so I just wanted to let everybody know if there are questions on, on what's going on. Everybody's...
Very standard has been recommended.
Read through it. I don't have any questions. Okay. No, sounds good. So all in favor of the motion as presented? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You are good to go. Thank you. Let's see. Item number eight, reschedule April village board meeting due to spring elections. Approval requested. We have discussed 29th of March, I believe, as, because the election is the following Tuesday. If you guys, everyone, please check their calendars and see if that works for everyone. It looks good. Can we have a motion?
Hold on. It's the 29th?
29th.
The previous Tuesday. Good makeup.
He's good?
All right. I'm in town.
All right. Well, then we get our meeting.
Awesome.
So would you make a motion to accept, or to move the meeting to the 29th? Mark, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. All in favor of the meeting being moved to the 29th of March? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Government would grind to a halt without you guys.
These meetings would be a lot longer, wouldn't they? Okay. Next item on the agenda, new business from the board or staff. In First as President's comments, I've been asked by the school board to remind everyone that there is informational sessions coming out. There's a three-bond referendum is going to be on the ballot in April. We just moved our meeting for. I think most folks got these in the mail. I would urge everyone to educate themselves on the referendums, the costs associated with. And they're, they're having, let's see, the first, the listed meetings here. The first meeting was on the 22nd of February, which we can't, no longer attend, but there is a meeting on March 3rd, the Hudson Middle School, from 6:30 to 9:00. There's a meeting on 24th of March at the high school from 6:30 to 9:00. Both of those meetings, there will be building tours that will take place. You can look at the Hudson School sites. It's listed on there, and we'll have these on the website if you would like to look at those. But there are cost breakdowns, and I really hope that everyone will make the effort to learn about the referendums that they're proposing. Next item I have, as most everyone probably noticed, last Saturday, we had... Next item I have, as most everyone probably noticed, last Saturday, we had a sixty-degree day, and the bicyclists and the motorcycles are out in full force. I would hope that everyone would pay attention to that and watch out for bikes and motorcycles. I know a lot of the little children's are, you know, getting their wheels back under them, so give them a wide berth, slow down for them, please, so we don't have any incidents. And, finally, for me, I would like to wish everyone a happy and blessed Easter. Gloria?
I just have one item. I'd like to congratulate Melissa on her three-year anniversary coming up. She's been a great addition to our staff, and we really enjoy working with her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, thank you, Melissa. Melissa, do you have anything for us?
Uh, yes. The presidential preference and spring election will be on Tuesday, April fifth, two thousand sixteen, so just a little over a month away. Photo ID is required to vote, so please be prepared. You can review acceptable forms of photo ID on the village website at northhudsonvillage.org. Also, it is Gloria's twelve-year anniversary today.
I didn't really do that.
Well, congratulations, Gloria. And, I thank you both. You've been, you should make, make this job a lot easier than it did, certainly could be, or would be without you. So, I mean, I much appreciate it. Should've had cake or something. You guys never tell me when they have anything going on. Uh, let's see. Okay. Next is planning commission. They did not meet. Personal finance committee, claims are approval.
Stan, can I move to approve the December two thousand fifteen on recurring claims of four thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-two cents in March two thousand sixty, non-recurring claims of sixty-eight thousand four hundred and forty dollars and four cents?
Second.
Mark, thank you, Colleen. Any discussion? Spending issue, I'll start with Kirk.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you, unanimous. Next, we have a presentation by Jim Thomas, a request for funding of the USGS Willow River Stream Gauge Discussion and Possible Approval. Finance recommended that we push this to the board for their consideration. Jim is here, so we should probably have a, I guess we have to have a motion to, in order to hear the presentation?
I don't think so.
Okay. Presentation first, okay. Jim, you're up.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, Board Trustees. My name is Jim Thomas. I reside at eleven forty Riverside Drive in North Hudson, and I am currently the Vice President of Lake Malaloo Association. Everybody is aware of what has been going on with the dam. My specific request to you tonight is, there is a USGS, United States Geological Service Gauge Testing Facility, south of the dam on the Willow River, south of the dam that was there and is removed. That unfortunately was shut down due to a funding issue in September of two thousand and fifteen. During this period of turbulence with, obviously, the silt, sediment, phosphorus, nitrates, everything coming into the Willow River and subsequently Lake Malaloo, it's a very critical time to be able to test this water. Ben Torson from the USGS is the Director of this program, and, and what the reason for testing this is why I have reached out to Hudson, Town of Hudson, and to North Hudson, is that in the event that the water quality ends up becoming dramatically impaired, it would ultimately have an effect on property values, which will directly affect property tax revenues for the three surrounding municipalities. We hope it doesn't get to this, but by having this in place, it will give us the information we need going forward to make sure that what is coming into the lake is acknowledged and we're aware of it. Hudson has approved the request for two thousand dollars. The Town of Hudson approved it tonight, and my request is the same for North Hudson for two thousand dollars. This is a one-time request, and then, we, the Lake Association, will make up the remaining difference, and this will keep this open for one year. This is not a reoccurring request. We are going to reach outside to different areas going forward in hopes that we can just get this, this funding for this first year when it is such a turbulent time. That is pretty much it. I'll try to keep it short. And, any questions?
So, Jim, what happened to the shortfall? How did it come up short, eight thousand dollars? Is it state issues, or...?
It was a DNR issue. The DNR used to fund all of it, and for some reason, they took their funding completely back, and their fifty percent funding that they are responsible for now is actually coming out of the dam rebuilding fund. Yes, Darrell?
Jim, in the information that we were provided with and read before the meeting, you indicated that you were hoping for a three-year commitment. Has that changed? You specifically said this is a one-time request. That's question A. Question B is, you said that you were going to seek other sources. What happens if those other sources don't pan out? Will you then come back to these other municipalities?
In all honesty, Darrell, I think that if the other sources don't pan out, it will probably end up being closed in the future years. But, this period of time, we've actually been taking samples. We just haven't had the funding to get them processed, but having a snapshot of what happens over this twelve-month period going back to September of two thousand and fifteen will, will be enough evidence to go forward that we know the same amounts of sediment are going to continue to come in if we don't get funding.
Okay, so specifically, you are not looking for a three-year commitment? It's just a one-year?
No. This is a one-year commitment only, yes.
Who's taking the samples?
It's the United States Geological Service, and it's a gentleman named Ben Torson is the Director. How the facility operates, real quickly, is it's just a concrete building. It's about ten by ten. It's solar-powered, it's heated, it's got a refrigerator with a huge carousel in it, and it's got twenty-eight sample bottles. So, anytime there's a water event, they can run this from anywhere in the world and just program it, and it'll take a sample. And, it's pre-programmed anytime that the water level fluctuates. It tells how much water's flowing through, and, but it will automatically take a sample if there's a huge surge of water. Mark?
So, the testing for the next year is to fund the continuation of it? They've been actively doing it up till now? Or, when did it end?
It ended September of fifteen. But, with that being said, we have been taking samples because it costs nothing to do that, where the cost comes in ascending those samples off. So, our key, our key time is gonna be this spring with everything that has changed in Little Falls Lake, and what happens with the spring runoff, that's what we really wanna capture.
Where's it physically located?
Hold on one second, Ted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jim, if, if the data you collect is not what you desire, does that, does that kick in a mechanism to have sort of remediation, or is it, do you have to, or is that another whole other avenue you gotta go down?
Well, basically, what we're trying to do is have data so that we can make a determination going forward. The DNR, in this situation, and, and I don't disagree, they, they had to do something with the dam. And, their responsibility is the protection and well-being of the residents and the people that could be harmed. But, there does come a point where they have the, a bit of responsibility to address the impact that the removal of this causes. This, having this information at a point in the future could help out with that issue.
So, in other words, the DNR's position right now is, they don't care what happens to the Malaloo?
They do care, but it's...
Not enough to fund the testing of the water?
Right. Yes. What, what puzzles all of us is, this has been open forever. It's been funded forever. I shouldn't say forever. A long period of time. Why it was closed right at the most critical time going into this is anybody's guess, but we just basically want to make sure that we're looking out for the best interests of the quality of the water for everybody it affects on so many different levels. The Valley of Homes is just one. The use, the fishing, just recreational...
So, the data collected would, would have some concrete value going forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it will. Anything else?
No, that's good. Thanks, Jim.
Ted? I'm sorry.
Physical location?
Physical location, about four hundred yards south of the Little Falls Dam that was breached on the east side of the river. So, if you walk through the Willow River State Park, it's just on that little path before you go over that bridge that goes over the river, to the walking trails. Yeah, it's, it's a pretty interesting little facility, and it's definitely got a purpose. And, with your approval tonight, we will be able to move forward and have the, the total support of all three municipalities that are involved in this.
So, are you gonna hit the county up?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Are you gonna hit the county up next year if you need more money?
Yeah, we'll see what happens. We're, we have been just under so much pressure, and I have to apologize, I've been on vacation for an extended period, and this all, this is just, just, there's been so much to deal with in so little time that, I'll be honest with you, this is the most important part. The other aspect of this is, we've had a lot of involvement with Sheila Harzendorf, with Dean Knudsen, with everybody on the eastern side of the state, and they really want to see involvement by the municipalities, and this show of involvement will be really helpful on a lot of levels going forward. Even though it's a small amount, it shows a commitment and a desire for, from everybody that we care about what's happening.
Yeah, and that lake and park has a huge economic impact around this area, so that's, that's what I'm, you know, curious as to...
Yeah. In a nutshell, it's, I think they said it brings twenty-eight million dollars in revenue annually, just with what people spend in the surrounding municipalities' areas, and already, they are seeing less than fifty percent of the reservations for two thousand and sixteen that they had for two thousand and fifteen. So, their approach that most people come for the view and the waterfalls is, is we're finding out that people really do want a lake there. So, yeah, it's all, all of this is important, and it's all interconnected.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. If there's no further questions, is there anyone who wanna make a motion to...
I'll move to approve, Stan.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second? Thank you, Colleen. Any further discussion? Since this is a spending issue, I'll start with Brian.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you. And, thank you, Jim. Talked to my bankers. Gloria, Gloria, and Melissa, somebody will be able to...
We'll be in touch with you. Thank you all very much.
Who's the USG guy? Again, what's...
It's Ben Torson.
I get it. I'll find him.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Yes, and truly, thank you all very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for all, what you're doing.
No problem. Okay, nothing better to do, right?
You can run for the board again.
You cut your vacation short, didn't you?
See you in four weeks, Jim.
Next, item C, bank selection options discussion and approval. We're, we're, every year, we look at banks and to make sure we have places to put the meager funds that we have, and we've been having some issues with our present bank, the, let's see, it's some central bank, what is it, you mean now Midwest One? Or something like that? And, it's just to, the motion would be to allow Gloria to do an RFP for, for our banks.
I'll move to approve the RFP to, for our banking services.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Discussion. Darrell?
I listened to some of the discussion that was taking place at the finance committee, and my observation, which may not be fair, but my observation was that there was not great enthusiasm to move forward with an RFP. I would urge two things. I would urge us to do it, because I think it's important to get a request for proposal for all kinds of village services on a regular basis, to review not only levels of service but costs. But, I also would urge us, if we're going to do this, to be serious about putting out an RFP and not just do it for the exercise and not be serious about taking the information that comes in and making a decision. Because I can tell you, from the other side, responding to these things is also a lot of work. And, if we're sending it out as an exercise with no indication that we're serious about getting the information and make a decision, then I would vote in the opposition of sending it out. If we're serious about it, which I think we ought to be, then I'll vote in the affirmative.
No, I, I believe we are going ahead with it, you know, I mean, it may not have sounded like it at the, at finance, but we would like to do that because it is, you know, our responsibility to...
Agree.
To get the best product and best prices for any of our services out there.
I'm just pointing out that responding to an RFP for bank services...
And, that comes from somebody who is in the business for a while.
Speaking as a retired banker.
Yeah.
It's a lot of work.
You've had, no, and, and we're not doing this to, just to have them jump through hoops and, you know, and, you know, again, we'd be very happy to stay with the bank, you know, if they are competitive with the other ones that are out there. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion to run an RFP for bank selection options? Signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ananis, thank you. Item twelve, Public Works Committee Recommendation Chair update first. Ted?
So, Public Works did meet, and we do have a request for the full board. There has been, Mr. Sweeney, unfortunately, I'm actually be quite transparent about it. I was hoping he'd be here tonight, since it's his issue. But, in any case, with the Lakeview Drive Pine Street enhancements that we've made over the summer, there appears to have been some drainage issues on Mr. Sweeney's property, which actually does not adjoin or, but up to the Lakeview Drive, but he's down below it on Riverside Drive. And, he has come to us on numerous occasions to ask that we help remediate a drainage issue onto his property. And, with that, I guess, Kevin, I'd ask that you just give kind of a general update, and then we can decide if we need to...
Basically, I'll just put one of these pieces of it so quick. Wonder how we can get that off. Okay, so this is on the end of Lakeview Drive, street project that we did here last, last year. This is where we put the, you know, there was quite a bit of discussion about the Hammerhead on the south side. We ended up putting some riprap in this particular area, and that's shown, it's in the black, just, just because we seen a lot of erosion. You know, when we originally did the fieldwork out there, some erosion that was taking place and back... And back last fall, Mr. Sweeney approached us and had some concerns with, you know, some of the drainage that was coming off the roadway. The roadway itself was reconstructed to the existing width that was out there before. So in theory, there wasn't any additional impervious area that was added to this. So kind of Public Works looked at this a couple of months. And we've approached David on this too, just to get his input into it. And this is what we're looking at constructing either next month or the following month. We'd just be, you know, enlarging what's out there right now, trying to make that into a depression area, putting in a manhole with a casting and then an open bottom with some washstone. And then a pipe that would head off to the east. Just try to promote as much infiltration since you have such good underlying soils in the area, granular material. And then creating a berm on the southern portion where, you know, the water would overflow in the bigger storm events. So just trying to trying to redirect the drain. It's kind of in the more of a southeasterly direction instead of going due south. And David's on board with everything of what we're proposing here. I've approached Total Excavating Company that did the original construction. And they're anticipating around $4,000 project budget-wise. We've got all the numbers pretty much finalized. The overall project looks like it's going to come in about $16,000 less. So there definitely is some dollars to, to use to do these improvements.
And this is on village property, correct?
Yeah, the village, the stash line that's here that's representative. Anything within side of that is, is village property. So that's one thing we did approach.
What size drains going to the east?
What's that?
What size pipes going to the east?
We were thinking like a 12-inch pipe, perforated pipe that would sit in the bottom of the
What are you sinking in for a manhole size then?
Uh, be like a 48-inch manhole with four-foot depth. Just try to get it below
Just four? Okay, that's all you need? That's good.
Just to get, you know, below the frost?
Yeah.
Frost level.
Should be able, easy to clean out then for us and
So, any other questions?
No, this is like, a lot of the parks we have, we should name this because a lot of our parks are drainage areas, you know? Just kidding. No, we don't name parks after. But, no, I, yeah, I think, you know, I mean, issue, it's there. It's not improving, you know, his property. It's, you know, we're, and if, you know, if we were causing it or if there is, you know, it was awful wet fall. But, you know, but I mean, again, if it's running through there, I mean
Well, look at it this way, it's a good test of it. And we have some dollars in the construction budget.
Right.
Two years from now, it's out of the general budget.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's whatever happened there, and as Kevin alluded to, I don't the street's the same size, but you shift one thing a little bit one way or the other and the water run differently.
Yeah.
It seems like a reasonable fix.
The thing is, we don't think we changed the water flow. Kevin has repeatedly told us that we set the road back the same way it was. And this guy's been there three years. We did add a lot of water last year. And if this doesn't hold our, our work, is it going to come back to us again?
Are you suggesting that the fact that we're fixing it acknowledges culpability in it?
So if we didn't do anything different, my only question is, why would we fix it?
I think, you know, we're just trying to improve, prove the situation that was out there before. That's where all the water went before we did the construction. You know, there was erosion that was taking place. We were just putting the riprap in there just to try to mediate that issue. That's, as soon as we put that in, that's kind of when all the, you know, questions came up from, from David.
So there was a lot of discussion about what was it like prior to? What was it like after? And kind of where I landed on it was, I wasn't there prior. Clearly, there was erosion onto his property. I don't
Yeah.
anybody disputes that. So I can't really, in good faith, look at Mr. Sweeney and say, you're trying to get the village to fix a problem for you that was there to begin with. I don't know.
I don't know if I look at it that way. I think that the fact that we're responsible for it, the street, we created a runoff area. Regardless of the circumstances, if there is some runoff going to the Sweeneys that's causing a disturbance, wouldn't it be in our best interest just to be responsible to put in a modest drainage?
Yeah, absolutely.
Catch system? So I don't think it admits any culpability. I think it's just actually, we step up to the plate better and try to enhance the drainage aspect of it. Drainage is a funny thing. I mean, you do all the engineering you want. And it, it can go in different directions. So we're making an attempt to it. And it seems like a reasonable one, and we have the funds to do it. I think not to do it, I think is, I don't see the rationale for that.
I do think it's key that the engineer is saying that this is, this is just an improvement to a situation. It's not that we're fixing something, it's an improvement.
Right. Yep.
And just, you said earlier, there was a lot of discussion on the Hammerhead. Now, did that add impervious surface to the area?
It added some impervious area, but when you look at the whole drainage area, it's a small amount.
And, you know, and when you're downhill, when you're under, you know, at the bottom of the hill, there's always going to be a water issue of some sort.
Yeah.
You know, so as Terry mentioned, that we're just improving the situation. We're not attempting to alleviate all drainage situations here.
Oh, I get it.
You know, can't
No, it's an improvement.
Yeah.
It's an improvement on the project so that, you know, I'm I'm good with it. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions? Okay, and a suspending issue, so let's start with Kirk this time.
Yes.
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 Stan, do we need to clarify the amount? I don't know if I
Wasn't it written in the 4,000?
I think she made a motion.
Did I? No, I don't think I did either. Actually, that's what I'm asking.
I thought you made the motion for
Yeah, so
Okay.
Having said that, I would make the motion.
Yeah, but we already voted on it.
Oh, we did not. Yeah, we did too, yeah, so
You voted, but you didn't vote on a motion.
Okay.
I will motion that we proceed with fixing the
With making the drainage improvement.
Drainage improvement, not to exceed the amount of $4,000.
Thank you, Ted. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Okay, now it's been, the motion has been made and seconded. It always happens when I
She's saying. I wasn't paying attention.
On an in-pro session, you know? My fault. Kirk?
Yes.
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 Thank you. All right, next, item, public safety. Mark?
We did meet, but we have no action required from the board.
Okay, thank you. 14, Public Welfare Committee Recommendations. Colleen?
Public welfare did not meet.
Thank you. And 15, Mark the Word.
Public welfare did meet. And Buck Malick had given us another presentation about the building forestry program that we've been invited to participate in with Hudson. And we would like to purchase a total of 10 trees, nine of which to be at Chief Jansen Memorial Park and one here at the village. So two swamp oaks, two Japanese lilac, two Redmond Lindens, two river birch, and one honey locust. The swamp oaks and the the lilacs at the village hall will be planted on Arbor Day, probably April 30th. And the rest will be put into the gravel bed for planting in the fall. So I'd like to move purchase of 10 trees in gator bags, tree stakes, wire and grommets at a cost of $1,100 to be paid for with the funds available for Chief Jansen Memorial Park for nine trees and the one at the village hall to be paid for from the park maintenance fund.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Thank you, Mark. Questions or comments from the board? And this is funded out of the park maintenance, so Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
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 Thank you. I'm guessing all these trees are good for that particular area. I mean, you know, like I hear swamp oak.
Yeah.
I guess there is a wetland up there, but I'm just curious as to, you know, we put a swamp tree up on a sand dune, you know? I mean, I'm not, you know, I mean, just a question. I'm sure Buck had our best intentions and for there. So, all right, the next item on the agenda is to, we, the board will consider convening into closed session pursuant to statute 19 dash, or dot 8.5, parent one, parent E, to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of properties, public properties involving investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session with respect to the possible purchase or lease of the municipal garage from Zappa Development LLP. So we need a
Motion?
Motion to go into closed session?
Yes, I'll move.
Thank you, Daryl. Second?
I'm going to recuse myself, Stan.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, so
Melissa, you have, Mark's going to recuse himself from this.
Thank you, Doug? No?
No. Need a roll call vote. Got to have a roll call.
Roll call vote, Brian?
Yes.
You could vote no, right? And then he gets to stay.
Yes.
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 Okay, now, we've had a thing.
Good night, Doug.
You too. Can we turn it on now? Yep, we're good to go. Okay, we're back in open session after the discussion to on the purchase of a, the municipal garage from Zappa Development LLP. And could we have the motion now, Colleen?
Now, I'll move to appoint an ad hoc committee to pursue the possibility of purchasing the currently leased building from Zappa Development, stipulate the purchase price in the next lease agreement to purchase at some point in the future or start looking for a different location to purchase in the future.
Can I just raise my hand for a minute? Do we want to get Mark back in here?
He may have left.
He might have gone to
But he shouldn't be. He's recused himself from this issue.
Got you, got you.
And somebody else can make the motion to adjourn once we get this vote done and stuff. Yeah, I have my doubts that he stuck here.
He took his jacket, so
You don't need a motion to adjourn anyway.
Okay.
Can you start that?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I have one question. Who's going to appoint the ad hoc committee? How's that going to work? Who is going to be on it?
I will appoint the committee.